Order at six P M. Roll call Laura Borlahe here. Lee Perriman, Nate Brewer, Ashton Fowler, all here. Invitation was given at the beginning of the work session by Ashton Fowler. Now it's time for the pledge of um.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with equal rights and justice for all.
Okay. So our councilman Fowler. Report um for Mayor Heidl.
Just a couple things as President uh bring to the people's attention. Do we have a proclamation stating that President Ronald Reagan first established a National Senior Citizens Day begin in nineteen eighty-eight. National Senior Citizens Day is established to honor the historic achievements of our senior citizens for our families, the Solocogah community, and the nation as a whole. Solocogah community values our senior citizens and wishes nature, to nature, a community full of opportunities and cure and growth. Solocogah is committed to President Reagan's original statement, which said places in which older people can participate. Excuse me. Can participate to the fullest into find encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and service that they need to continue to lead lives of independency and dignity. And now Mayor Solocogah do hereby declare August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four as Senior Citizens Day. Tomorrow at ten o'clock at the parcel record, there will be another program honoring our citizens of Solocogah. I want to uh, we have completed the Walnut Road Bridge. We thank Michael Rice and his engineering company, E E F and S. They came in fifteen hundred dollars under budget and on time. It was also completed, the Gene Stewart Boulevard project, and that was also completed with a thirteen thousand two hundred ninety dollars and sixty-nine cents under budget. You can't thank that engineering company enough for all the fine works they've done for our city over the years. And you want to take an opportunity to thank the council for their input and the tweaking that will be done. The ordinance twenty-two seventy by uh Josh Coleman. This is going to go a long ways to help us in the future to clean up areas in Solocogah. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Mayor. Alright. I need a motion by a council member to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Alright. I need a motion to approve minutes of the regular work session held off August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Alright, no old news, old business, only to new business. Alright, number nine, public hearing to rezone property located at five-six-two West Fourth Street from its current MX dash two limited mixed-use district to institutional district city clerk treasurer to reordnance number twenty-seven seventy-one dash twenty-four into the meeting minutes.
Twenty-two seventy-one.
Uh twenty-two seventy-one dash twenty-four, sorry. Alex. Is this for you to read the?
Oh, sorry.
Number nine.
Thank you. Alright.
Ordinance number twenty-two seventy dash twenty twenty-four.
It's seventy, it's twenty-two seventy-one dash twenty-four. You're talking like me. Number nine. It's where the uh property located at five-six-two West Fourth Street.
I believe she just asked the ordinance that Josh presented, isn't it in the gray folder? Twenty-two seventy-one?
I apologize. Ordinance twenty-two seventy-one dash twenty-four. Ordinance rezoning five-sixty-two West Fourth Street, Solocogah, Alabama, three-five-one-five-zero. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Solocogah, Alabama as follows. Section one, ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four dash twenty of the city of Solocogah, Alabama, adopted March eleventh, twenty twenty, entitled the zoning ordinance of the city of Solocogah, Alabama, adopted by the Solocogah City Council under the authority of Title eleven, Chapter fifty-two of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five compilation, as amended, and providing for the establishment of district within the corporate limits of the city of Solocogah, Alabama, to regulate within such district the heights, number of stories, and the size of buildings and other structures, the percentage of lot that may be occupied, the size of yards, and other open spaces, the density of population, and the use of buildings, structures, and land, and to provide methods of administration of this ordinance, and penalties for the violation thereof as last amended, is hereby further amended as follows. By removing from its current MX-two limited mixed-use district to institutional district as defined in ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four dash twenty, the following described real estate situated in the city of Solocogah, Talladega County, Alabama. A tract of land lying and being in the city of Solocogah, county of Talladega, state of Alabama, and in the east half of the southeast quarter of section thirty, township twenty-one south, range four, more particularly described as follows. Beginning at a point being the intersection of the south line of Fourth Street, sixty feet wide, with the north and south line between sections twenty-nine and thirty. Running fence south along said section line, seven hundred ninety-six feet to a point fence due west three hundred sixty-five feet to a point fence due north seven hundred ninety-six feet to a point in the south line of Fourth Street. Fence east along the south line of Fourth Street, three hundred sixty-five feet to the point or place of beginning containing six point six-seven acres more or less. Less than except commence at a corner in place accepted as the southeast corner of the northeast one-fourth of the southeast one-fourth of section thirty, township twenty-one south, range four east, Talladega County, Alabama. Fence proceed north two forty-seven eighteen, east along the east boundary of said quarter-quarter section for a distance of six hundred twenty-eight point fifty-five feet. Fence proceed north eighty-seven degrees sixteen by sixteen west for a distance of a hundred and seventy-seven point thirty-six feet. Said point being located on the south right-of-way line of Fourth Street and being the point of beginning. From this beginning point, continue north eighty-seven degrees sixteen eighteen, west along the south right-of-way line of said Fourth Street for a distance of a hundred eighty-seven point seventy-six feet to a corner in place. Fence proceed south two degrees forty-one oh-two, west for a distance of two point two-nine, I'm sorry, distance of two hundred twenty-nine point forty-two feet. Fence proceed north eighty-nine degrees twenty-six fifteen, east for a distance of ninety-four point thirty-three feet. Fence proceed north thirty degrees fourteen by thirty-six, east for a distance of forty-three point ninety-three feet. Fence proceed north twenty-nine degrees fifty-four by fifty-two, east for a distance of forty-nine point ninety-nine feet. Fence proceed north thirty degrees thirty-three thirteen, east for a distance of fifty point thirty-six feet. Fence proceed north twenty-five degrees forty-six thirty-three, east for a distance of fifty-one point forty-two feet. Fence proceed north ten degrees twenty-eight forty-nine, east for a distance of forty-six point seventeen feet to the point of beginning. The above described land is located in the northeast one-fourth of the southeast one-fourth of section thirty, township twenty-one south, range four east, Talladega County, Alabama, and contains point seventy-two acres. The address of the herein described real estate is five-twenty-six West Fourth Street, Solocogah, Alabama, three-five-one-five-zero. Section two, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption, approval, and publication as required by law, adopted and approved by this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four.
Alright, I now open the public hearing and call for comments. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Each group representing or supporting the same familiar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. So is there anyone here who would like to um speak on this? I close the public hearing and call for action by the council. If to consider this meeting, I need um, I need a motion to introduce.
Motion.
If no action is taken at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules and to give immediate consideration.
Motion.
And second?
Second. Okay.
All in favor?
Yea.
Okay, if unanimous, a motion, I need a motion by a council member to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Number ten, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the properties constitute a public nuisance including inoperable vehicles, abandoned, and/or dilapidated structures, refuse, and waste accumulation located at eight-oh-five North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, described further as parcel ID two-seven-oh-nine-two-nine-one-oh-one-five-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. City clerk treasurer to read resolution number ninety-one twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes.
Resolution number ninety-one dash twenty twenty-four. Resolutions for nuisance abatement at eight-oh-five North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, three-five-one-five-zero. Whereas the city of Solocogah, in accordance with ordinance twenty-two thirty-two dash twenty-one, instructed by Josh Coleman in his capacity as nuisance enforcement officer, through its resolution number seventy-six dash twenty twenty-four, approved July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, to give notice of the intended nuisance abatement action to the owner or persons in charge of the thereafter described real estate as the information appears on the record in the office of Talladega County Probate Judge, and the date and time of the public hearing regarding such nuisances as such by the city council to be held in the Solocogah Municipal Complex. Whereas the city council conducted a public hearing on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, to allow any interested parties an opportunity to show cause as to why the city should not proceed with the abatement or to comment on the issues regarding the abatement of the nuisance as presented during the public hearing and thereafter described, and. Whereas the city council, after having considered the comments, facts, and other information presented during the said public hearing, has determined that the existing conditions described as being maintenance and weed nuisance on property described thereafter are hereby declared to be a public nuisance, and that said nuisance is hereby ordered to be abated on that real estate described as follows. Eight-oh-five North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, described further as parcel ID Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Solocogah, Alabama, that Josh Coleman as nuisance enforcement officer is hereby directed to proceed in accordance with ordinance twenty-two thirty-two dash twenty-one, and is hereby instructed to take action necessary to abate the herein described nuisance, and to give notice of such action to the owners or persons in charge of the above described real estate. Adopted and approved this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I now open the public hearing and call for um comments. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Each group representing the same or similar, similar opinions are limited to one speaker.
Good evening, my name's Angie Williamson. Thank you. My name's Angie Williamson, I'm the sister of the owner of the property, Angie Deason. Um he's not able to be here tonight, but um Josh Coleman has um made us aware of um the conditions of the property and um and the history that um that these, these properties do, are a nuisance to the community. Um we understand that, and uh starting this weed progress will be made. Um we pulled demolition permits today for um for us to be able to do the work ourselves. Um there's no money left in the um estate, um in the Oliver Hendrix estate. All of the funds either went to um pay for expenses, or they went to a charity organization. So any cost incurred um that the city has already incurred that we need to pay back will just come out of our pocket, and we can't really pay any, whatever it would cost for the city to do this, we really couldn't afford. So we're gonna um, we're gonna take it upon ourselves to do it, and so like I said, we pulled the demolition permits today, and have contacted um uh Carton's Unification, and they're supposed to be coming to give us an estimate tomorrow.
Where do you think you'll have it uh completed?
Well, I'm not sure, we need to see the extent um once we speak with them tomorrow. Um and also um I contacted Jeremy Jackson today about, because there's asbestos, and so we need to figure out what's the proper way of disposal.
Josh, I know the last time you spoke to us, you said that there was already some work being done by the family. So has there been anything, um any progress since the last time on behalf of um the family?
Uh so ultimately the family, um Angie Williamson's out of town, so she traveled over here to be able to speak with you, and to uh that date at the time in between then and now to start working on their plan if they were gonna move forward with handling themselves versus the city.
So Angie, so you live out of town, so do you plan on staying in town until this is taken care of? Or will you be traveling back and forth? Because I know this is something that, you know, we've been trying to take care of for a long time, and I I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to see what, what your timeline is.
Right. Well, and we would really need to update you as things progress throughout this week. I plan to be here this whole week just to get things, to get the ball rolling, and just see how, how far we can get this week with, with plans. Um and.
So si- so sixty days?
Um, you think we can do that in sixty days? It's, it's possible. I mean, it's, it whether.
I'm sure you can show some progress.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, within the next two weeks, you will see all the jump uh that is visible. Take it away.
And I think you.
Starting this weekend, it will be uh moved.
When do you think, I'm sorry, when do you think Jeremy might get back in contact and remove asbestos? You have to remove the asbestos before you can tear the property down, but that's still correct, right Mike?
Yeah, but they're under a lot less scrutiny as owners than we are as a city.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We, we're um, when I talk to the Department of Environmental Management, we are ex- uh we're exempt since there's, if we just stick with the four.
Okay.
Um depending on the extent of the asbestos.
Right.
So uh if it is just um, just the, the siding, uh then we shouldn't have any trouble.
Okay.
And not all the properties have asbestos, one property did not have any at all, and uh Angie has asked for access to the report that I did, and I didn't have any, I didn't have any issue providing that report to her to, I guess, get to Jeremy to see what all was involved.
So what's the timeline you recommend, Josh?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So are, are you suggesting that it would be okay for us to delay this after it's gone on for so long? Because we're at the, we're at the, we're at the date, and this is not a, another extension. Are you suggesting that we should?
I would, we're in to give them time.
How much time?
Sixty.
Okay, so, but we still, let me ask you this, so it's on here now to declare it as a nuisance. So we still declare it as a nuisance, right? We still have to declare it as a nuisance, and we give them sixty days before we do anything, or?
Uh based off of my research from other entities' timelines, we would not be able to pass ninety days. So I think sixty is a fair number because we have to have our work done within ninety days.
But the question is, if we declare it a nuisance, are we automatically giving it to you to follow the course of action and the opinion?
Within ninety days.
Okay, because I don't wanna not declare the nuisance, and then we have to start over.
So as long as I follow the ninety-day rule, once you declare, then.
So do you mind um taking pictures and giving us updates at our um council meetings, just so we can see the progress as well?
I took some pictures today, and um then I believe we'll be in close contact the entire timeframe that they're working, and I can provide email updates as those go along.
So we would declare it as a nuisance, you would follow up within ninety days, and if it's not fixed, then proceed.
Uh correct.
And you, you'd have to understand that.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure that, once it's cleaned up, Mr. Rick.
Thirty days to do it then.
Correct, but I can pull that off.
If we give them sixty, and they don't get it done, they would only give us thirty days as a city.
And I believe I can pull that off within thirty days based on all the work that I've already done.
So are you suggesting we split it in half and give forty-five days?
No.
No?
Yeah, you would say sixty.
I say sixty.
We do, and.
Yeah, maybe sixty.
I think you know the um.
History.
Yes, you know the history and uh the struggle we're gonna face with just getting started.
Do y'all, is there any plans, once you get everything set for, are there any plans for the property, Mr. Rick? That you know of?
I would like that zone where you, just uh storage units, you know, like the main over here.
Yeah.
That uh, that bike shop, that's what I've been trying to get him to do the years and years. Uh to clean it up and concreted, uh make it nice, the fence uh gate. I mean, that's, that's income for him, uh it's, it's great for the city, you're gonna get tax dollars off of it. That's what I, that is about the only thing you can do over there, to keep it. You can't build a, uh build and put a business over there, I don't think.
If you didn't make sure it's a produce stand.
We'd be ready to do that, but we don't wanna get in competition.
I hear you. Thank you.
Alright, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and um call for action by the council. Um if to consider it this meeting, I need someone to introduce it.
I'll introduce.
Okay. Alright. I need a motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve, and this is us declaring it as a nuisance, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Okay, number eleven, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the properties constitute a public nuisance including inoperable vehicles, abandoned, and/or dilapidated structures, refuse, and waste accumulation located at eight-oh-seven North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, described further as parcel ID two-seven-oh-nine-two-nine-one-oh-one-five-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. City clerk to um treasurer to read resolution number ninety-two dash twenty twenty-four into the meeting.
Resolution ninety-two dash twenty twenty-four. Resolutions for nuisance abatement at eight-oh-seven North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, three-five-one-five-zero. Whereas the city council of the city of Solocogah in accordance with ordinance twenty-two thirty-two dash twenty-one instructed by Josh Coleman in his capacity as nuisance enforcement officer through its resolution by seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-four, approved July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to give notice of the intended nuisance abatement action to the owners or person in charge of the thereafter described real estate as the information appears on the records in the office of Talladega County Probate Judge, and of the date and time of the public hearing regarding such nuisance as set by the city council to be held in the city Solocogah Municipal Complex. And whereas the city council conducted a public hearing on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, to allow any interested parties an opportunity to show cause as to why the city shall not proceed with abatement or to comment on the issues regarding the abatement of the nuisance as presented during the public hearing and thereafter described as. And whereas the city council after hearing considerable, sorry, whereas the city council after having considered the comments, facts, and other information presented during the said public hearing, has determined that the existing conditions described as being maintenance and weed nuisance on property described thereafter are hereby declared to be a nuisance, public nuisance, and that said nuisance is hereby ordered to be abated on that real estate described as follows. Eight-oh-seven North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, described further as parcel ID Therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Solocogah, Alabama, that Josh Coleman as nuisance enforcement officer is hereby directed to proceed in accordance with ordinance twenty-two thirty-two dash twenty-one, and is hereby instructed to take actions necessary to abate the herein described nuisance, and to give notice of said action to the owner or persons in charge of the above described real estate. Adopted and approved this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four.
Okay, now I'm gonna open the public hearing um and call for comments. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Each group representing or supporting the same or similar opinions are limited to one representative speaker. So are we, is this the same situation as the last one?
It is.
And Josh, you're um, we're just gonna do the same thing, just a lot in the sixty days?
It's six days.
Six days, a big fan.
Six days, with ninety days at um minus, and uh I was also looking at um the, not the asbestos, but the um, yeah, I guess the asbestos there are that would create us potentially doing a sealed bid within this timeframe? Because it was over a hundred thousand. With the city council, if they're paying that, it comes down to.
Would first get the asbestos off?
If they're not done within sixty days, I'm having to go ahead and let the ground work.
Oh.
You face, I expect that's certainly a long plan, and put line insurance in place.
Let's just see what happens with um, as we say, plan A. Let's just see what happens in the sixty days, and then um come back, and we'll discuss it again.
Because um within thirty days, then we'll know.
If they're getting, if they're getting close to the deadline, and you don't think it's gonna happen, just come back, and then we'll put that in place.
Okay, well, just something that I wanted to give, um to think about once I was.
The same thing, alright, okay. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and call for action by the council. Um resolution number ninety-two, ninety-two dash twenty twenty-four, as introduced by council member?
I'll introduce.
Alright, if no action, if to take action at this meeting, I need to um motion to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
If unanimous, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Number twelve, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the properties constitute a public nuisance including inoperable vehicles, abandoned, and/or dilapidated structures, refuse, refuge, and waste accumulation located at eight-oh-nine North Main Avenue, Solocogah, Alabama, described further as parcel ID two-seven-oh-nine-two-nine-one-zero-one-five-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. Um Alex, I don't think you have to um, I don't think you have to read this one this time, because it's.
Question though, the parcel ID number eleven and twelve are the same.
They're all the same, sir.
All of them, so sit on the parcel.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have to reread the resolution?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Alright, so um, where am I? Okay, so again, we're gonna open the floor for um public comments. Alright, so um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh you can go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, I'm.
Alright, so same thing. Alright, so are there any um additional comments on this one? So are there any, um, additional comments on this one? Josh, we're good.
I'm good.
All right, so I'm gonna, um, close the public hearing and call for action by the council. If to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay. If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion by council member to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Okay, now your motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number thirteen, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the properties constitute a public nuisance, including inoperable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse and waste accumulation located at eight eleven North Main Avenue, Silicotta, Alabama, described further as parcel ID two seven oh nine two nine one zero one five zero zero one zero zero zero. Again, Alex, you don't have to, um, read the resolution, so I'm gonna go ahead and open, um, the floor for comments. Remember, speakers are limited to five minutes. Each group representing or supporting the same or similar opinions are limited to one speaker.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna close the public hearing and call for, um, action by council. And to consider at this meeting, I need someone to introduce Resolution Number ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll introduce.
If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion by council member to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration.
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Now I need a motion to, if unanimous, now I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Okay. I think that's it on the public hearings, right? Okay, so you guys will do it, okay?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Number fourteen, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the mayor to execute the warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of general obligation warrants. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four into the meeting minutes, if there's anything, um, additional to add.
It may not be that idea to have her read this, since we're discussing.
All right, well, let's read it.
Just, just read that, you know, the, the gist of it.
Yes, sir. Resolution Number ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four, resolution authorizing the execution of a warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of general obligation warrants. Be it resolved by the City Council, the Council of the City of Silicotta, Alabama, the city, as follows. Section one findings, the council has ascertained and due and does hereby find and declare as follows. The council has adopted Resolution Number seventy-one dash twenty twenty-three, declaring the intent of the city to issue in one or more series in honor of four September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, its general obligation warrants, together the warrants for the purpose of financing the cost of various capital improvements in the city. The council has also adopted Resolution Number seventy-four dash twenty twenty-four in which the city engaged Piper Sandler and Company, the underwriter, to serve as the underwriter of the warrants. The underwriter has reported that, in light of market consideration, it is advisable and necessary for the city to enter into a warrant purchase agreement, the warrant purchase agreement, with the underwriter respecting the sale and delivery of the warrants before the council considers an ordinance authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of, and setting out definitive terms for warrants, and it is necessary and desirable to authorize the mayor to enter into warrant purchase agreement at such time as the same is presented by the underwriter for execution by the mayor, provided, however, that the warrant purchase agreement reflected in terms and conditions set out in section two. Section two, authorization to execute warrant purchase agreement. The council hereby authorizes and directs the mayor to execute warrant purchase agreement between the city and the underwriter, provided the warrant purchase agreement include the following parameters, among other terms and conditions. I, the aggregate principal amount of the warrants may not exceed the sum of forty-two million dollars. Two, the underwriting discount for the warrants may not exceed twelve dollars and fifty cents for one thousand dollars. Three, the final maturity of the warrants may not be later than February first, twenty twenty-four. Four, the net interest cost for the warrants may not exceed five point five percent. And five, the sale, issuance, and delivery of the warrants shall be approved by the ordinance of the council authorizing such actions and setting out the definitive terms of the warrants, adopted.
Does that say it can't exceed February of twenty twenty-four? Cause we're past that.
No, ma'am, it said the final maturity of the warrants may not be later than February first, twenty fifty-four.
Oh, February fourth.
Sorry. Four, the net interest cost for the warrants may not exceed five point five percent. And five, the sale, issuance, and delivery of the warrants shall be approved by ordinance of the council authorizing such actions and setting out the definitive terms of the warrant, adopted and approved this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion by council member to approve Resolution Number ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the mayor to execute the warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of general obligation warrants. Any motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay. I'm going to vote no, due to interest rate at five point five, that is saying that if it comes in at five point five, this is what we will be pursuing, and I'm scared that, uh, we would be in a financial bind, I feel was to accept that.
All right, you got that in your notes, though?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, number fifteen, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number eighty-four dash twenty twenty-four for the Silicotta Police Department to, to declare one Dell Optiplex seventy twenty SN four X six M nine four Z and one Dell Optiplex seventy sixty SM BOF nine BO three as surplus property and authorize disposal on lovefields dot com online auction or other appropriate means. City Clerk, Treasury to read, um, intermediate minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add.
Okay, all right. I need a motion by council member to approve Resolution Number eighty-four dash twenty twenty-four for the Silicotta Police Department to, to declare one Dell Optiplex seventy twenty SN four X six M nine four Z and one Dell Optiplex seventy sixty SN BOF nine BO three as surplus property and authorize disposal on lovefields dot com, come, online auction. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Approved. Number sixteen, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number eighty-five dash twenty twenty-four for the Administrative and Finance Department to declare various computers, equipment as surplus property and authorize disposal on lovefields dot com, online auction, or other appropriate means. Um, City Clerk, Treasury to read anything into, read intermediate minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number seventeen, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-four and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to purchase, to the purchase of one subson heavy-duty custom pump complete and delivered totaling nine hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There is nothing to add.
All right, I need a motion to approve this purchase, well, I need a motion to approve the mayor to, um, authorizing the mayor to enter into this agreement?
Motion.
I got Laura.
Second?
Second.
That was that two names?
Ashton.
Ashton. All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-four to reallocate one million dollars from the bond interest account and deposit in a certificate of deposit for the purchase of one subson heavy-duty custom pump complete truck. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's none on the resolution, um, however, did you need to know or want to know what bank and what the interest rate was?
Yes, Laura said it.
Southern States Bank, five point three one percent.
You got it wrote down?
Nothing else to add.
Love you?
Yep.
Okay. All right, where am I? Okay, I need a motion to, um, approve this?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Laura, all in favor?
Yay.
Number nineteen, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-four to appoint Brandy Chadwick to the Board of Directors of the Improvement District of the City of Silicotta Memorial City Square Project. Term expires July sixth, twenty twenty-five, and will fill the unexpired term of Douglas J. Cowell. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing.
Okay, I need a motion to approve this appointment?
Motion.
All right, I heard, act Nate, second?
Second.
All right, from Lee, all in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number ninety dash twenty twenty-four to appoint Mike Dearing to the Board of Directors of the Improvement District of the City of Silicotta Memorial City Square Project. Term expires July sixth, twenty twenty-nine, and will fill the expired term of Aaron Breeden. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number ninety dash twenty twenty-four into the meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add.
I need a motion to approve this appointment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-one, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number ninety-six dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the game time CO shredders, rec- recreation, and ref- to replace Noble Park Playground equipment totaling three hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Funding from Parking Reg earmark fund. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number ninety-six dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-two, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the purchase of the Massey Ferguson Model five seven one one standard twelve by twelve tran- transmission tractor and diamond equipment model, B B M dash C dash N right-of-way more through the Alabama State Tractor Contract and A T two 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 totaling one hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Funding from Street Department earmark funds. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add, um, the purchase order's already been done for this.
Okay, sure, all right. I need a motion, um, to approve this purchase?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to amend Resolution Number sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four to approve Resolution Number ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-four to amend the FY twenty-four general fund operating budget to reflect the increased sales tax revenue from ten million one hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred sixty-five thousand eighty-five cents to sixteen million four hundred thousand. City Clerk, Treasury to read Resolution Number ninety-eight F twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes. If there's anything to add.
I don't have anything unless somebody wants me to read it.
Okay. We'll read it. I need a motion to, um, approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Twenty-four, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to purchase two Model three two five D five three four one six two eight nine eight C C max torque diesel engines, no gas, hydraulic pump, and wheel motor transmission heavy-duty extra, extra deep seventy-two inch cutting bed luxury seat and shock absorbent fortress and two premier suspension seats. Five three three five eight O totaling thirty-one thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Funding from Street Department earmark funds. This sounds fancy.
Very much so.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I just wanna drive it, I'll work for you one day.
Who was it?
Motion, motion from Lee. All right, I need a second?
Second.
That was you?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all starting to sound alike. All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-five, action that is necessary to approve Dana Safety Supply Incorporated to install lights and computer equipment for one F one fifty totaling four thousand one hundred twenty dollars, originally approved by City Council on August sixth, twenty twenty-four for one F one fifty, funding from Silicotta Police Department earmark funds. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Twenty-six, action that is necessary to approve an increase in utilities expense for the Silicotta Little League Fields for fiscal year twenty-four totaling ten thousand dollars, funding from general fund. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Um.
Me.
Ashton and Laura Upstain. Number twenty-seven, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for an Ameritech to run various cat six voice data cables for the animal shelter, fire station one, fire station two, police department, and the street department totaling six thousand four hundred eight dollars, funding from the general fund. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
All right, how many names was it?
I've numbered them out.
Two notes, all right, so three, two, motion passed. All right, you got your notes, Alex?
Laura Barloes, Lee Perriman said now.
Yeah, all right. Number twenty-eight, action that is necessary to authorize the mayor to execute the G seventeen and G twenty-three disclosure requirement for issuing bonds and City of Silicotta General Obligation Warrant Series twenty twenty-four dash A, financing the cost of various public capital improvements in the city, including without limitations, paving, drainage, bridge, reconstruction, and repair and repairs and renovations of public buildings in the city. And general obligation warrant Series twenty twenty-four dash B, financing the cost of various public capital improvements in the city, including without limitations construction of a recreational center in the city. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-nine, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for technical and professional services related to redistricting, I can't say that, redistricting, totaling, it costs not to exceed ten thousand dollars, funding from general fund. Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Who was first?
Um, Lee was first, but I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Plus to update city ordinances at a cost totaling ten thousand two hundred dollars, totaling from, to- totaling ten thousand two hundred dollars funding from general fund. All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number thirty-one, action that is necessary to approve the police department to purchase ten bulletproof vests totaling ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, funding from capital. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number thirty-two, action that is necessary to approve the mayor to enter into IT support agreement with Ameritech for the months of August and September twenty twenty-four totaling twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five, seventy-five hours at a rate of a hundred and four dollars per hour, right? Cause it says, uh, unused hours are rolled to the following months.
The next paper starts here, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
All right, so three, two?
Same two?
Yes. All right, action that is, action that is necessary for council authorization for the BOE to install a fence at Pinecrest Elementary School, Colley Road, on city on right-of-way subject to compliance with ordinance twenty-two thirty-five dash twenty-one, section three dot oh two dot oh five. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve, City Clerk, Treasury to apply for the John G. Burton Endowment Scholarship for Anthony Giddens for the Certified Municipal Revenue Officer Training from October sixteenth through October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, cost previously approved by City Council in the fiscal year twenty-five A and F budget totaling two hundred and thirty-five dollars. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve, City Clerk, Treasury to apply for the John G. Burton Endowment Scholarship for Alexandria Lambert for the Certified Municipal Revenue Officer Training from October sixteenth through October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, cost previous, previously approved by the City Council in fiscal year twenty-five A and F budget totaling two hundred and thirty-five dollars. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve the police department to purchase and install equipment from Hanes Emergency Light, Lighting totaling six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts payable invoices totaling six hundred nine thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cent. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Did somebody say no? Okay, um, there you go. Alright, number thirty-eight, it's time for anyone to address the City Council. No action will be taken at this time. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for record prior to addressing the council.
I don't have a microphone, but I, um, approached Mayor Highgold regarding a question I had that I previously brought up to.
Say name and address.
It's Sandra Emerson, Talladega County. Um, I brought up an issue in April of this year to the City Clerk and I did not receive a response I felt was sufficient. Um, so I brought it up again today to the mayor. And, um, basically my issue is this, the agenda for the work session and the council meetings do not match. And, um, that's the agenda that's distributed to the people that attend this meeting and the public. And, um, it appears that there's more than one agenda, one for the employees in the council and the one that's distributed. And it makes it difficult for the people that are, makes it impossible for the people that are attending in here to follow along in the meetings. And I'm asking if it's possible that the one that's emailed to the distribution list um, could be the same as the one that you guys are following so that we can follow along.
Okay, alright. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Could we have a discussion about it or give an answer?
No, I, no ma'am, remember, um, there's no, there will be no discussion at this time. You have to get on the work session agenda for discussion.